So it's. The maybe the echo. Okay, so this is June 4, 2025 and it's 6:30 PM. And I am declaring this meeting open. This meeting is being recorded. And as I said, right? All right, no members participating remotely. I just like to be nice and polite. Okay, so we're open citizens, statements and petitions. We have. Oh, shoot, it's not on schedule. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I'm a scriptist. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. For such stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, never be destroyed. Alright, so do we have any citizen's statements or petitions online or in the room? So seeing no hands, we'll move on to number three, which is correspondence.
We have one. So you had, you have a one member. Or mission member, a mission mission filed a disclosure of potential appearance conflict interest. Um, who's going to file the complaint with you all. Um, the nature of the appearance conflict interest is this member is having an engineering firm to work with the current capacity. It's an engineering firm occasionally presents a part of that information. Filed disclosure, subject to this department to be their job, but will not be an actual conflict interest. I still have the council, this will be disclosed that appears to all. And if anybody had additional questions or thought we should investigate further, please. And myself and council that spoke this solution. Uh, what's the projects over, private projects over? He's been asked before, it's confirmed that my understanding, regular old eight or all of this presents a problem with, but they. So there is no conflict interest, has the appearance of a conflict interest. So the form states that to do the job personally. Obviously, especially that if they, I was assuming that it was. Not using software.
Be sure.
It's a word. Yes, yeah, the dog. They're doing work. The development feels that it feels that's just. So it's an engineering firm that this people was hired to give a change work on. It's engineering work on, except other house that. Directly.
Basically. Okay, so. We have, we have a public meeting in forty five seconds, so I'm, I'm going to. Scroll past and go to number six, which is beauty events. And this weekend, the friends of the Mendon elders will be holding their annual progressive yard sale. So June 7th is the, the date and June 8th is the rating day. And so you can look for updates on Cedar Center website. I'm assuming probably well, Facebook with the Cedar Center website would be the official place to get that done. Right, yes, sorry. Right. Great. Is there maybe a little? Alright, so number seven, continuation of the public hearing. Already here, already. Alright, so I'd invite the National Grid presentation. Talk, how's it going?
Fantastic, all the time we'll see. How are you?
So the chair is speaking.
Jeff Silver, National Grid.
Hello.
Welcome. I'm happy to be back. Which one would you like to discuss first?
The pole is moving forty five feet north on Hastings, the intersection Hastings Street.
Okay. On North Ave.
On North Ave, yeah. And this is the one related to the club. Can you be charged with?
Uh, the other one is.
The other.
Which would be. North Avenue, which is further down at one forty, one forty eight, which is pole ninety one and a half.
Forty.
So the plane is forty nine feet and then we're gonna install. All across the street from ten to support pole ten, which is going to be pole ten dash eighty four. And now I'm just gonna have an anchor and a guide off it also. So pole nine's moving back, gonna add an anchor in the back. Then. Ten dash eighty four is gonna support pole ten on the seventh street.
So I am bored. Any questions? Right up in the center. I presume this is one hundred and sixty, but it writes paper for that to put back corner back. So just so the community knows what's going on. Mass DOT is coming through with the Route sixteen rehabilitation project. This corner is gonna receive a left hand turn lane as well as an improvement to the light, you know, white lane. So this corner has to be wide. Didn't I presume that they're gonna have to move that telephone pole? And give it a, a different type of gravity support in order to. So it may seem too simple. Since work we need done. I don't see anybody, is there anybody in the community online or. In the building that would like to ask any questions about the movement of the telephone pole? Alright, so then I'd be looking for a motion. Oh wait, so sorry, that's too fast. Then if there is. If there's no discussion for the community, then I'd be looking for a motion to close the.
Right.
Discussion. All those in favor? All, aye, aye, all those against? Right, so that motion. Passes and then. I am. Right, so I'm looking for the, the next motion, which would be to approve the pole installation and relocation on North Ave. At forty nine feet north of the intersection with Hastings Street.
Motion to approve, approve the plan this.
Second.
I have a discussion. All those in favor? Aye, all those against? Alright, so the motion to move the pole forty nine feet on North Ave is approved. And so we. Just hit six forty and I, I am continuing the public hearing from last time. In regards to the next poll, which is.
Maple Street.
Maple Street. And this again is related to the sixteen project, so Maple Street is a, at Hastings. It's another intersection that's going to see major improvement, including light, a traffic lane. And so in order to widen and make room for the traffic light in turning lanes. Uh, they're gonna have to move that telephone pole, slide a little bit down, dot rather than. Twenty feet. So is there anybody online or in the audience that wants to ask me questions about the Maple Street, Hastings Street telephone pole? I'm seeing no discussion. Be looking for a motion to. Close this year.
Second.
Scott. All those in favor? Aye, all those against? Alright, so the hearing is closed. Uh, and then I'd be looking for a motion to deny the whole relocation on Maple Street. For approximately two hundred and twenty feet east of the intersection, Hastings.
That would.
Second.
Okay, okay, I move to.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those against? So we approved the movement of the Maple Street telephone pole here. We're a little early for the. Six forty five, pull up the. Yeah, we can jump back to the meeting minutes. Do you want to give us just two minutes to do speaking minutes?
I'll give you all the time you want.
Alright, and so number four is meeting minutes. So we had distributed March 12th, March 26th, April 7th, April 9th, April 23rd. And May 2nd of the year 2025 to the board. And so hopefully you reviewed them and suspended any changes. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve those minutes. So any discussion? Alright, then all those in favor? Aye, all those against? Motion approved. Official recorded, so we have distributed May 21st, 2025. And I have number five, this should be in your packet. That's one that's like recent, like. Guess enough. So in forty five seconds, we will open up the next public hearing. Regarding another poll. You guys. It's only ten more seconds.
Four, we have the progressive yard sale.
You guys, so anything?
As a person of families. Parents, usually progressive yard sale. Those things.
Yeah.
Will be end of land.
Yeah.
If you have a legend.
Yeah.
Where the thing is.
Yeah, they have a map and I look with it and they have a bingo, which I don't see yet. You want to know what it's about, see we go to an hour.
The national book there's a three dollars.
Three dollars, so.
That's the deal.
Yeah, well, that's where they do that.
Alright. Hey, I said, alright, wow. I am going to continue the six forty five public hearing. Uh, to consider moving a whole wire fixtures on North Ave. Pole ninety one dash five, eight hundred feet south of the center line of the intersection with Powers Road. So this is, uh, this is the plus four one. This is where the pole needs to move back a little to support the line.
Installing a new.
A new.
Correct.
Okay, so a new pole to support the.
Transformer.
Transformer, okay.
So it's gonna provide primary service to the new transformer for the.
Right, it's not using a small. Southern transformer.
Correct.
And a lot is gonna, I think I remember last time.
Yep.
Right. So this is.
Sixteen. Some hours.
Yeah, you're right, it is, but this one right here. Is at eight hundred feet away, hour thirty feet away. Go from this point. Yeah, it's about a quarter mile, right?
We're pretty accurate with the numbers.
Yeah. That's crazy. It's something I could consider that word for it's missing, but right. Right, Jeremy's map there is, it's pretty close, so. So yeah, is there any, are there any people online or in the audience that want to talk about the pole that's being installed at Plough? To support a transformer or a UBS. Oh, yes.
It's a power.
It's North Ave, one forty eight North Ave.
So this is not the classical, but I don't know what this one is for. Do you know what this one is?
We've been there.
It is a new transformer.
It is. I think there are.
Misco Hill Middle School is what Google says.
So there is a new driving right now, the school. Town and so the first part of this will be sent there. They just.
Yes. Right, just pretend I didn't say any of that other stuff, transfer that to Misco.
I'm supposed to shake on iPhone that deletes whatever you thought you were saying.
Fortunately, we don't really have that luxury. This is permanent and my mother can start shaking. I get louder before I shake. Okay, so seeing as there's no questions except for corrections to the chair. Uh, in the, in the group online, I'd be looking for a motion to close this year. So. Uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? And then I'd be looking for a motion on the installation of the pole.
Have. Ten.
Done. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those guests? Uh, oh, and I'm, I apologize. Alright, so the motion is approved to install a pole for the Misco Hill School UBS. Part of my purpose. Uh, and that is our public hearings for tonight. Thank you, National Grid.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate your time. So. Patrick, are you in the audience today? Do you want to put that up? So number ten, appointments. Our longtime veterans agent Robin is passing the baton to Patrick Martin. He's here to discuss his appointments.
So let me just quickly say, I really appreciate the support that I've had on the thing on over the last sixteen years. It's been, you know, a real trip for me. I can't, I can't say enough because I enjoy helping people. And that's what I've been doing the last sixteen years, so I'm. Also very supportive of Patrick here, who actually I trained. When, when he was coming up through the ranks and I can't say enough about the fact that he would be. For the, he would be worthy of your support.
I mean, his honesty really needs to be thanked. Your sixteen years supporting that means a lot for the community. That couldn't have been easy. It's not really a job where you give thank publicly, you give thank privately by those veterans. But I'm sure they're very, very happy that they asked all of that. We really appreciate your time. I mean, like, it's an important thing and it's hard in a small town to give people these important tasks. So we appreciate you putting in the number. So anybody in Portland?
Jim, I just want to say. Probably. Scarlet, although, although it's besides. Not known. Only. Although certain. Very worth it.
Right.
Yeah. I believe he worked harder since he retired, you know, he was actually working. To build, serve the community as well, man, this entire life. Being official, sir, you had a boss. It shoots the floor. But it was, they're.
So Patrick, you ready to take on that?
Yeah.
Happy version?
Well, yes, but let me, let me say something too. I, I was fortunate enough through another organization to have met Robin eleven years ago. And so we, we, we're both shine counselors, which is a Medicare. Thing there. And we got to know each other because we're both veterans and one thing after another is he wanted to step back. He asked me, so he mentored me and I will be honest with you, tell you that the state has made a lot of changes. In the nine years since I started doing this and one of them is this state gives no training, zero. Not a. And so if you want to learn to be a veterans agent, you have to seek out other offices and go and just sit with it. Out well. I don't need my GPS to find his house. So Robin and I spent a lot of time together and we've served on committees. Local and for the state and done it, so you know, I, but, but I enjoy it, you know, I'm like Robin. I'm younger, that's why I still do this. Uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm also retired and I, I enjoy doing it, so. I do have Upton and Oakdale, which Robin had all three at one time, so I just sort of followed it on. Jeremy has spoken with the town managers both, as have I, so everybody's, everybody's good. So I met. Jennifer, who does your HR and she just, she just asked what was going on. I have an office in Upton, okay, there is no, zero space in Oakdale, okay? And in fact, they're moving out of their. Town hall, they, they're town voted to get them out of there because they, there's no heat. So it's okay in the summertime, but the rest of the year, it's not, it's not good. Uh, so we'll work out whatever it is here, but so the arrangement that I, that I've had with the other two towns is. I use Upton, so they supply me with the computer and I. Almost everything we do now has to be scanned and sent on, so I use all their equipment there. And, and people meet me because there is an office, but I, you have space here. And I'm more than happy to, to meet with anyone that does that, but I need to be in Upton to do everything. Uh, I am certified, as is Robin, to submit federal plans as well as the chapter one fifteen. So anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to see if I can help the folks. If that's it, that's all I have to say.
Then since there's space, the technology. Central costs as they come up and industry all the replacement, what events are not available. I agree with you, please. This is what most of us is, well, you're using just. We're.
Well, that's awesome. We appreciate you then following those footsteps and. Helping out our local best, that's, that's pretty great. Alright, so I'd be looking for, for a motion here. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those guests? So the motion passes, we really appreciate you coming on board.
Well, thank you. It's very nice to meet all of you. I'll get all the stuff. I, I kept trying to send a note to, to her, but apparently I wrote down her email. I kept putting God in there. Alright, thank you, folks.
So I'm gonna jump to fourteen. Chris, this is what I hear from. No, that's.
Maybe.
Oh, right, you're not, are you here for the lights, Chris?
I am here.
Dan, who'd you like to come on? So number fourteen is accepting of a donation for the neon lighting project. I've been setting up a gift account last year, last year. Uh, it's been a year and a half.
It's been years in the making, but really seriously in the last couple of years.
We've got multiple grants to put out lighting and put in fixtures and all this other good stuff. And now it's all coming to a head and being installed and. A big donation is coming in. We need to separate that.
So. Yeah, so I mean, just the overview, so we, we've been talking about lights for years. I think my father mentioned trying to do like a drive at one point to get us to win something. But we finally decided to buckle down and get it done, so we wrote a grant for the state of Park, Parklands Community Acquisition Grant. Acronym. Um, soliciting CPA funds, Community Preservation Act, and then also through the youth, baseball and the youth softball. They've been running numerous fundraisers to solicit private donations. So we were able to get a hundred thousand dollar donation, grant from the state. About baseball, what is the final?
Twenty four thousand, four hundred and eight.
That's an impressive amount. It's just happened. See what it like to matter though, one of us. That's.
Red night? Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I haven't really said anything yet because we're waiting, the, the lights are operational, they're up, they work.
Oh, really?
Many of you are around there hoping to do a small ceremony on Friday, kind of a makeup of opening day.
Oh, wow.
Celebrate the lights.
That's really awesome. Alright.
We turned them on the other night, they work.
They turned on and off.
Yeah.
Are they on again? Are they LED?
They are, yes, they're modern LED.
They're instant on?
Instant on, yeah.
That's pretty bright.
Yeah, so we, and we've also replaced the lights on the tennis and basketball court. So you've got Lowell Field, Pizzella Field, tennis court, basketball court. All LED, scheduled through a nap.
That's really great, so, and so baseball is looking to extend seasons of games and get more time on fields.
More time in fields, tournaments. They double up, get the kids to jizz, play the lights a little bit.
Tournaments, need more people in town, need more revenue, business.
Revenue, all that, yeah.
It's great.
Also more revenue where there's club teams that will now potentially be interested in booking this field. So we can.
Get out something that like, you're working on, I love that. Looks like.
Well, yeah, we already have facility use, but now we have lights, just became, right, yeah, so these, these lights, by my very rough calculation, it costs about four bucks an hour to run. So we'll certainly need to. So we'll certainly need to account for that. Book the field, right. Because then you have these club teams where they're paying a fee to be part of these organizations. They're looking for field space and they'll pay for it. So we'll keep close now.
That's great. Jeremy, what we have to do is adjust the motions to create the amount, then another motion to accept.
Yeah, so accept the donation and then if, if there's no prescribed baseball funds, they are. So we create a new fund. I'm just going there instead. Yeah, I talked about the home fund too. Need to set up some income on a chart. That is for under the expenditure pattern for the year. So save the invoice for lights, won't be this now, or spend it down this.
I mean, I'm, I'm in the process of emailing you. We did get the final invoice, so we are pretty much going to turn around and now spend this. So I don't know if that impacts what makes no sense.
Yeah, we're gonna be in and out.
Yeah, okay.
So either way, first, enough to actually have. Set up the account, except we do.
All right, well, then I'd be looking for a motion to set up a given account for the people. Discussion. All those in favor? All those against? Excellent. And then I'd be looking for a motion to accept this extremely generous gift for the, for the lighting project of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars to put in that deal now.
Move to accept the donation.
All those in favor? Hi, all those against? Excellent. The motion has passed, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much, appreciate you all. Oh, we really appreciate you. It's not just the money, but all the time you guys put in to maintain those fields. We talk about all of my, they bring it up all the time. Very important that all is accepted to be honest, thank you.
Thank you. If you were missing, we have an incredible partnership with both your softball, your baseball, and then also there's like thirty-seven other groups, soccer and cross that these groups of volunteers put hours and thousands of dollars in all these facilities and this stuff will not be possible. This is just one little.
It's awesome, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you, I think Jeremy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. You as well.
And then I'm going to go to number eleven, which is the sign request from the Millford Arts Center. Do we have somebody online?
What was that earlier today?
Okay.
Really excited and I thought she was gonna be online.
Okay. So this is Millford Arts Center is putting on a play for The Mean Girls, which is a very, very popular show. And I've seen that, had, ever since. It's going to take place on June twenty and twenty-first. They would like to put a sign up at the corner, or it's not in here, but I think it's up at the corner of, toward that. So this is something we've done before. So I'd be looking to, or to make a motion to approve the sign.
Where, where's the sign going to be?
I believe it's, I'm gonna go down and find this email, but I believe it's on the island, at the, at the corner on sixteen. So if you'd like to put in your motion, the, present the place that's. Yeah, right in front of the flower, yeah. Well. The front of the bank is not our property, so. Yeah, that's third. So I think they want to be on them. Right. We'll be there, right. So, so, I mean, I think we could probably reply to her media, I don't know, but probably the island is a better position for the sign than, than private property. Right, I mean, I know that signs go there, I just don't know that they're last. I know that we've done off football signs on that corner, scout signs on that corner, so. In front of the sign, oh, right there, yeah, okay. So across the street from Charles River Bay, but. Any discussion? Yeah, and now that I see that it says put in the sign and not like class, maybe their thing is that I'd be able to. Like, there's a six foot sign, yeah.
It's, it's been our practice, that would be, yeah. Yeah, folks will say, okay, it's our, it's our.
All right, so all those in favor? Hi, all those against? So the motion passes, place a sign for Mean Girls on the corner. All right, number twelve, Anne, do you want to come up and talk about the revised purchase and sale for the dead property?
Sure. So that we've been working on this for two years, but we're finally coming to the end this month. And it's on Fair Road, it's a hundred and eighty-eight acres and the town is buying a development rights from Peter Dunn. And the reason that there's a new sale agreement is that we, when we did the survey, it doesn't match the assessments numbers. So we had to redo the assess, the appraisal and it was actually less than a thing. So, and then also on the, you know, so we had to change the closing room, so those two children. But there's a third one where they, we had to add granting. And Charis is, she put together. Now, everyone's giving the same amount of money. We were working with six groups, so it's been like a lot of moving parts, a lot of documents. But everybody's giving the same amount, which is really great because that means that we're using less CBA money, which towards a purchase price would be putting two hundred and ninety thousand, which is less than we want to. So that's good. So that's the purchase and sale, and if that could be signed tonight, that would be wonderful. And then there's other documents, so I don't know what you, how you want to do this.
Yeah, so we were notified less than forty-eight hours on a bunch of other related documents to the dead property. Do they need conservation restriction, which has been going on for a pretty long time, so that really needs finalized. So we're gonna talk more about that.
Sure, so the conservation restriction has been scoured by Charis, Soderbahn, the nature conservancy. We interest in us and it's at a point now where it is almost done, that the state and the nature conservancy is taking one last look. And there might be like little dramatical changes, you know, very minor changes. But Charis, what I'd like you all to do tonight is to vote to approve the conservation restriction with the caveat that if minor changes are needed, Charis to make them. And then, once we have that approval and the state says yes, move forward, then we get a signature from you. But we're in a really tight, it's difficult, so.
Yeah, I'm making sure that the changes must be here, council, but maybe all right.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, I mean, that's reasonable. Yes.
And then there's other, there's two other documents. So then the nature conservancy, they're giving us the town six hundred thousand dollars. So they want contract, which we've gone, gone back and forth and it's, you had it, Charis had looked at it and she's all set with it. Well, it's just things like, well, the nature conservancy, the reason they're giving us enough money is there's an endangered species on the property. So there's just certain guidelines we have to follow and all that. Right, and it's just more specific. They want to make sure that, you know, follow.
They want to make sure concerning the species that.
Right. The conservation restriction, they've approved it already.
So the recitals. So the intent is to use the possibility acquisition, so they're saying, give me this money, you're gonna use it for described, this is here. Describe some practices. And then they wish to assist us. The funds being received, the similar to M O A B R's. Sites, only grant, Qatar, some grant, and five. You'll have to. We are going to use the funds in a way that we can describe, very useful for the person.
It's another thing I was gonna add.
And we'll actually get support from them. We have, since we have funds left over, we can use that to prepare the property, figure out where the trails will go. There's like motorized vehicles that go on the property, so we don't want that, you know, in areas named it really, but especially where the endangered species are. So things like that, we need to work through, but everybody's agreement that we want to, you know, trails and location. Against the habitat.
And the two million dollar, I saw them online, that's similar.
Yes, the, the same thing, and that one's not as urgent because they know everybody else is, but they, you know, it's strange on the. Not yet, but it's crazy. But it's.
Yeah, same thing as Grand Palace, same grand, not fair, warrants, same grand. And we'll do that money.
Right, we, we're buying the development rights, but we, we have public access. And, you know, we can go on the property and make trails and.
Well, we think that this, this, this is what a lot of members have said. So we, we're going to be, we kind of have the capacity to, like, probably, very.
Yeah, there might be more, but I think, I think the owners own it. One thirty-one North Avenue also is another one, we didn't put any money into that, but we hope the town holds. Yeah, I mean, and, and it's, it, it, in ways, it's better to have the property owner own it if you still have public access, because they take care of the property. You know, and the town doesn't have to do all the maintenance. And so it's a nice collaborative. But then, and then Jeremy mentioned the land grant, which is five hundred thousand dollars. And we have to have all these reports and documents completed, you know. And so I need your approval so that we can move forward and then get your signatures, you know. So I don't know when you're meeting again, and we're hoping it goes on June twenty-fourth, and we only have until June thirtieth. And, and the funny thing is, is like, we've all worked in this for two years, you know, and you, and like, we have not been asking you, but I don't know what it is. I think it's because there's so many other groups we're getting information from, we just don't see. Well, I think what will be best is if you do approve these, I think the Mass Autobahn one maybe, I don't know that we need all the signatures. I think it's just you, Jason, and then Town Farder. But if we get your approval, then I can get the signatures. And once the conservation restriction is, the state says go ahead, we'll have to set up something where you can sign it, but it's like a motor, you know, a few motorized, so maybe come to town, I'll do that. They need everyone. I mean, at least in Florida, but it's really better if it's everyone, so. And then the nature conservancy one.
So there's nothing, none of the, none of the motions are. So.
It's just approval so that then you can sign it outside the week, you know, just as soon. And luckily, you're in order.
I'll be first looking for a motion to approve the replies, purchase and sale of that property. Discussion.
And can you sign that tonight?
Absolutely. All those in favor? Hi, all those against? And then I'd be looking for a motion to approve the conservation restriction on the dead property. I'm just gonna. All those in favor? Hi, all those against? Excellent, motion passes. Previous one, and, and so I'd also be looking for a motion to approve the nature. I did not get to a conservancy, the nature conservancy grant at the amount of six hundred thousand dollars. Discussion. All those in favor? Hi, all those against? And that passes, good job saying conservancy. All right, and then the final one, I'd be looking for a motion that'll pass on. Discussion. All those in favor? Hi, all those against? And motion passes. So, and we will, we have approved all four of your requests and you will sign this.
It's been an experience. So Katie, can you keep the document and then Peter maybe we'll pick it up tomorrow? Okay, he can say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening.
You too.
I'm gonna jump to finance, we, we're here.
Yeah, so.
Number sixteen.
Last meeting with the board, I wanted to chair a group.
Last meeting with the board, I wanted to chair proof, future of the transfer. This was outside of the magnitude of what I initially, it will be as I quite had. We have those successor accounts that fund each year, so we can save all the. $8,000 employees into pay on those accounts in early years, but not the. And those accounts were stretched to then receiving for years, we're funded, not for what we see three years later. Right, so, but these town, we need our part of typically pays that means. So the successor has no right to answer, and she, she didn't come up with a budget, proceeding for years. So she's similar to I am, Karen, in the situation. An $8,000, her, Matt made it same, and she had like. So usually, uh, cynical, so it's the, it's the years, it was two, I was thinking, two. And the one is to do yearly updates, based upon sales guidance and. Person assessments on it, and there is a software associated with that, I think it's.
If it's a person, do something.
No, we, we, last year we paid out the article fund, year before we paid out the article fund. I think the marginal cost, so what gets paid out of there is most of the software service fee. And then the marginal cost, sort of those things, and. We fund it each year, we come up with a contraction of loss, each year we'll have to pay some. And this is the software.
That links the same, like, every year, so how do we ensure? At some point, I will base on, we don't, I have a policy, like, filling a policy.
So my.
Obviously not. When you put digital change, I ask that, that company, their budget, so like, they may just better increase that line.
There's also, it's a little bit tricky. There's the, the software and like the services that we people do, and that's the service, the services kind of do all of that. So now we're in like year three or four of this cycle, through the cycle. And what, there should have been $8,000 to actually to the software, and both services cost, and that's all. Your, your operation to that.
We've got to try to sell more, I would say, that's just been possible.
So, um, now available, so, a bridge into the fund, and, and, um, meeting this year, and raised album rate this year, was the same as almost last year. So, so we're likely to, so, so the same day.
I don't know what they, they, uh, the team, and, and so, for, for, you like, uh, the. Because there's, there's a shift, right, unless there's a issue, you said, certainly, right, in question, it's.
And, yeah, I, this is an off, check of my account, I don't have. Two seven, Karen, I don't, I don't bring it up, this is something pretty difficult.
That's about, you know, you have to find those finances, though. But we, but the head point is, what traditionally, basically, principal assessment, actually, to the finance, that is very simple. This is how much we need this to, to find. Third, it's free, it's possible. What's happening was that number was, well, for some reason, what, what are the things? So we just need to be sure.
And I will say, so, this is raised on the letting here, so this is part of what we raised inside of two and a half, that comes into this. So how we legitimate this $8,000 for every year. Our general fund receipts would end with five, would that be $8,000 or whatever, so that's a basic.
We need more of them, and, and I don't want to know, actually, it would be very spontaneous, and, and, where it's, what happened. You gotta go in, sister, Chris is part of, talking about two marketing software, some. Maybe you mentioned before, I understand, it's all of itself, within some, maybe, to a third of the town. It's a, uh, the American, yes, to do the recording. There is, there's something to that, some, is that's to do things that someone applies. And some, and we didn't, rightly should be, but it's never possible.
I got tradition of. Uh, so, uh, you're saying that you're still gonna ask me to be the single sign already.
I said, shut up. Excitation, but I'm trying to say. They've done the same thing where they over chair there, so, so send them to us tomorrow.
Uh, okay, so, uh, I'm gonna do, or the hard one. Uh, number fifteen, which is the special term of discussion from the 1926 meeting. And then I'm gonna do the discussing, so I will be recusing myself from chair position, putting like, chair position while I sit out front. Like, you've been elevated to chair for a time, so I can be.
Spent all the.
It's probably the air, the chairs. So I, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. So, Mr. Maroli and I are, um, uh, chairing and putting together, well, half put together committee called the 1926 Committee. Um, and we've talked about this a few times in session before. 1926 was the year that Troop One was chartered and mended, and so its 100th anniversary is coming in 2026. And so a bunch of Scotters and local community have gotten together to plan both a celebration and a campere. And we started talking about this six months ago, so like two years in advance. And it's something that we would like to hold the first weekend in November of 2026. And we've looked around all over town, and we've been talking to a lot of different people, and we've had a lot of different walkthroughs. And those are all done now, and we would like to request access for the weekend to the Inman tract of land. Not the CR portion of the land, the portion of the land where right now it's being hayed for us. And we've, we've spoken to that group of people that hay for us, and we've started to involve the land steward. And Anne, who was just here, is part of the land use committee, and I'll be speaking to her group on Tuesday. But we just did a walkthrough together this week up on Inman Hill. Here's my handwritten map, uh, which I, I, you know, I drew with my finger and mouse. And so this is Inman Hill, we, if you haven't been to Inman Hill, it's off of Blackstone Street, is a road called Inman Hill Road, uh, Inman Road. And it leads to the top of Inman Hill, and it's right going out of town towards Blackstone. And it abuts the massive fish and wildlife land, which is the Quissett Wildlife Refuge. And so it's hundreds of acres of contiguous wildlife and, and forest and trails. It's a really awesome place to recreate. On the very top of that hill, right at the bottom there where it says parking, so there's that road, there's a building here. And that right there is the building that Highway uses to store plows and equipment that they're not using. And our police and highway repeater is in that little building to the right of it. And then I kind of drew over it, but there's a building with electricity that Highway uses right kind of this direction, yep, right there. And so we talked about using this field as parking because it's flat, and using this other field as recreation because it's out of the way and enclosed. And we've been talking with parks and Highway about setting up camping. That area that's kind of highlighted in greenish there, that's an actual highlight, it's not green. Used to actually be open field, and it's sort of like grown in, there's brambles and brush and stuff. And so we've talked about putting real campsites in that space. And one of the things I've talked to the conservation agent about is identifying the invasive species. And keeping things like the native birch in this area. Isabella is really interested in, in helping us set up permanent camping here in town. And we would like to create these sites in a way that, I don't know, if you, so on that edge of that, Jeremy, if you could just move your mouse on the edge of that green there. That's the, the CR starts there and kind of goes over into all this wilderness. And so to the left of that used to be all sort of natural farm fields, and we would like to improve them for camping. We would like to bring up people, between 200 and 300 people for the weekend, to park in this area. We would be bringing up porta potties, we would be bringing up water, there's no well up there. So there's room for all of this, public safety feels that it's plenty safe for us to do this. It's a kind of a single, couple of hours in, couple of hours out, there won't be like travel of 300 people all weekend. Yeah, everybody feels like this is something we can do in the next 18 months. And so we're planning on using a, mostly volunteers to do the site building, although Highway and Parks, they already maintain this area. So it's, it's not anything really new to them, we're just sort of gonna redirect some of that maintenance to the spots we'd be using for camping. And clear those out with the brush cutter, for example, but it'll be scouts and volunteers and whatnot in there to sort of assemble the sites, put up signage. That's another thing that's gonna come out of this is permanent signage, where there isn't any right now on the trail system out in the farm fields. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So we're really excited at this prospect. The select board has the rights to approve or disapprove of, of this special permit. We would be looking for a special permit to hold this campere on that Friday through Sunday. And I've forgotten the dates, I think it's November 6th, it's right around that.
Just some additional information, public safety and fire, as long as there's some drought conditions, gives, giving us a ceremony with fire, we're in. So we can have a, have a lot of, there are campfires for cooking fires, and we, you know. The Highway Bill will be vacated because they take all of the plows and everything out in anticipation of winter time, so it will be empty. So we're gonna use that as administrative space for, for staff running camp really. And then obviously, the Voice Coast America, I think, they follow the council, has liability insurance, and as we've done in the past, we remain, as additional insurance for all the town partners. That, that would be skewed to the, to the.
What's that?
Yes. Anything, anything, what we, what we have to do, we find a charter permit, so we have to part of that charter to, to secure the permission again and out. And then part of that is, yeah, is Paul's, two different liability policies, they follow, I think, they maintain this. Under two million, national, maintain to five or 10, we have always on this, so we have, we have to definitely find the town.
Are you part of organizing this too as well?
Yes.
So you should, picture some.
He's the one, come over and sit next to me.
Oh, yeah, I guess I have a question, so, there's a, it's a draft motion here, what would the motion need to include the specific dates for the permit? I guess. I just wonder, a special permit, if it needs to be more constrained language, I mean, what that permit is for.
It, it would be both for like the occupation of that land and also the modification of the land to match these characteristics, and, and I would probably want to add something in line with the recommendations from conservation agent and from land use.
Would you want us to just?
Yeah, we've got plenty of time, so.
Hopefully, I mean, if you think about what's. Not all of it can be temporary, you can clear washers, and let me.
Right, that's right.
A lot of that, things that have been done in the past, because the area just wasn't there before. My, my goal with this is, as much as it can not be permanent, unless there's a plan. So when I hear somebody that ought to make camping or permanent, I don't want anything done without some discussion about, maybe camping site, any panel. I love to see this, you know, permanent way, it's always that, you know, it's not to do, I'm not saying, it's interesting.
But if I presented a written plan, then you would have something to look at and approve.
I have anything to understand, permanency. But that really came, I think, some of that came out of discussion, because conservation agent brought up, she like, so, no, no, yeah, and what I don't want is, I don't want individuals to just. They just do it in early, and we're making no, we, we don't, everything we do is just to make that event happen. Can you think about town parcels, that actually is one of the few that actually is available for strategic use, which might be, you know, I don't know. All right, so I just want to make sure it's, it's been with the values, on for it, let's do it.
Yeah, Isabella and I need to talk about what that would look like more officially. We are for this campere, going to improve that land for its temporary weekend use. We would like all of that effort to go to a permanent use, but we agree that requires. Yes.
And I, I think, the only thing that's, well, there are two or three people who are like mine, who can cash, they were often like that, and we really, we, we, we. So as much as you can handle playing, it's nothing, nothing that's, you know, any kind of permanent change, but, but enhances it for further use down. Whatever you do without an area, or step, right.
Right, because we hay the cleared part right now, and we wouldn't be changing any of what gets hay. The hay happens in September, late September, so we would be on those fields right after they were cleared. So, you know, nobody who is currently utilizing the land as part of their lifestyle is going to lose off anything. We are out of the hunting land, you know, like, we won't be changing any of that, so. Yeah, it should be all in that ad, but I do agree, like, yes, that portion, the permanency, we don't want to imply permanency without, without a, a look over.
That's given this effort, including standard, would be, maybe, these.
Sure, it's possible, yeah, I mean, ideally, if we had like water and shelter and, and real bathrooms up there, you could get more people to come and visit, which means more people in town using businesses, et cetera.
You know, one, one thing that we can talk about is, you know, the risk, the risk power up there. Well, what if we had, what if we can add somebody, put a well, so there was the washers, they, right. You know, there's, what would be recreational activities in the campground area, makes sense, Christine, all this, they, you know, I mean, so, it's one of that, yeah.
And this, you have not yet presented to land use committees, I know, I think it would be good to have their input and.
Yeah.
Like, remember that, but, I know, the other members will have thoughts about this as well, so.
Oh, I, I've definitely gotten a lot more input than I expected. Well, I've definitely gotten a lot more input than I expected. And in not negative way, like just even in the walkthrough the other day, I learned a bunch of things that I I didn't know. So, yeah, it's been really great. And then being introduced to the land steward up there, Trish, if you ever watch this, I'll be reaching out soon. Yeah, all that stuff has been really cool. And I, and I, like I said to Anne, like, and like Mike just referenced, like having all these people here means that if there were things that we wanted to do. Like I had just heard that we had wanted to put signs out on this new trail that they had created through the field. Now, you can't see where that trail is, it just all grew in with hay. And and Dan would like to go up there and mow it, but he didn't know where it is, so he's gotta like kind of follow the map. That's something we can do as scouts, we, you know, we've done this a bunch of times, sign and make trails. And so when you have hundreds of people doing that, we can kind of take some of the backlog off the burden of land use, concom. Who might have been going up there to tag trails, to create signs, to demarcate borders. And so we can, we can easily do that, that's something you can get kids to do.
Just once, once to simply, you know, conservation agent talked about where the trails are. It really needs to be a few chain crossings or bridges, small bridges, which are typical eagle project.
Yep.
So they all then identified and actually half the battle against that is getting all the permission, permit and permission. They're already saying, this is what we want, this is the way they need to be, this is how we need to be. So it's kind of, kind of leaving those two different, yeah, story.
Yeah, it's all, it's all very neat stuff, that and I forget what she called them, but way markers, the way markers.
But just, just so we're clear, we've actually been discussing the camp area normal for twenty five years.
Right. So I haven't been talking about it that long, but it has been mentioned to me for definitely at least the last five or six years. So they've been on, on me and and I'm happy to help make this happen. I, I think it's really good for the community and seeing and showing the town that land can be used for a specific purpose. And then, you know, put back and reused and I think that's really great. We hope to improve that space up there and make it a little bit more accessible and. It'll, it'll be neat, a little bit, a little promotion for our little corner of the woods over there. And then what we, I haven't gone to historical yet, but we would definitely really like to have like a representation of the historical community. Of mend in there during the day on Saturday and invite residents to come in and out and see what's going on if they'd like. Because there's a lot of scouting history, a hundred years of scouting history is a big deal. We have over a hundred Eagle Scouts from this community who've gone off into the world and done amazing, awesome things. And we hope to see them all back here. And just Mike and I were talking just yesterday, I just think this is gonna be a big reunion for a lot of people. Because there were people who weren't just in scouts, but supporting the scouting program from outside for all these years, you know. So as we've kind of grown from smaller community to a little bit larger. So, yeah, I'm fine with coming back with more detailed material about the permanency and the order of operations, all that will. It'll be after I've talked to land use, so that that's kind of my last large group of people here at the town to talk to. And and I can definitely, and then I'll go back to my committee and we'll, we'll put together a more formal plan. And actually map out the number of campsites and all of that, so you can get that certain numerical values, that work?
Yeah, sounds great.
Alright, so we'll get that back on the agenda in a couple of months here. Thank you, alright. Back in the scene, thanks Mike. Alright, so number thirteen. Number thirteen, twenty three Kate Road resident noise complaints. So we've been, we have received an email to the select board to talk about work happening. After the permitted, required permitted time period, which is either sometimes before seven o'clock in the morning or before. Seven o'clock in the morning and then on a holiday. So did you all receive that?
Yes. Yes, the floor was copied on this resident complaint, that's what's, that's what's I. So normally this is something that we go into, of course, to make sure I guess right into the record. Because this is multiple times having complaints and the building commissioner then addressing them at her intervals. Wanted to bring it up and have it as a, as an item here. I spoke with the, the kind of decision point here that we were initially talking about was the, so the building commissioner, I bring to the resident. That the enforcement of the site plan conditions is limited, that the commissioner can bring into court and find them for each violation. Would be approved over the judge magistrate, or we can bring the superior board and look for injunction to win them. And it's his, his professional opinion that neither of those seem to be the best course of action at this time to maintain. That was his judgment. I spoke with council and, you know, select board can choose not to reappoint the building commissioner. But during the appointment of the building commissioner, cannot direct his work to give one specific action relative to enforcement. So I wanted to make sure that was clear, is in other areas of the world, municipal world, you can tell me, go, you go do that. But in building commissioner enforcement. In terms of going forward, seen emails about it. Each individual complaint has been addressed by the commissioner with responding. Talking with the contractor and then responding to the resident. This project will hopefully be wrapped up soon and you won't have any more of these issues. But if the select board had any further concerns on either this project or anything similar, I want to say how I'm sure you have the same agenda.
And so twenty three Kate Road is the warehouse project, there's a box in, like you can sort of see it, yeah, from the phone. That, that has been on and off the agenda for the last few years.
I guess my question would be if, say the builder wanted to do something outside of the skirt. What is the correct way to shape that?
Go back to the planning board and get approved again.
And is there anything we can do as a town to give, to give us more teeth like the brush with?
We can do a noise ordinance and give tooling to the police department so that they don't have to arrest, they can. That, and that discussion is working its way through the bylaw or you can.
I guess my question. Is when I was reading through that email, it seemed like there was a certain point where the. The owner of the, of construction. Who was said, well, they just, you know, they, they just decided to just continue to, to just did it the way they were doing it. Because they couldn't comply the way they were told to. So what's the mechanism to shut something like that down and somebody's going, we just, we can't do it. I want to say, well, it doesn't matter, the planning board told you, this is how you have to do it. You can't do that, you can't just go ahead and do it anyways. And how do we prevent that from happening?
So it was the building commissioner's estimation that that was a one-time instance or a specific pour that will fall disregard to the hours. Even what was a, a, or consistent or a larger part of the project, that his professional judgment may have been different as to what the best course of action. Terms of.
But the close match also put, okay, just don't do it for you.
Yeah, this is all, this is all reactive, right?
No, no, I, quite, I understand that, but the issue is that, well, you're telling the building commissioner, they've, they've called. They are, even ones that was outside of this authority. The issue is our, our revenue is really just to tell that person that they can't be building. Because we can't tell them, we're making the decisions, we can't stop them, they're the ones that went to the city. So if you don't like the decision that they're making, then the job is just don't be a point.
Will be on, one of your real ones will be on next.
And Stan, there's, there's no penalty for this violation of the, any word.
Right, they, they didn't do anything wrong because it's the building commissioner, he told them to do it.
There was two, two separate things that I had to talk about. One, one is the, the email about, from the conservation.
So, so they were just up to the building commissioner and said, can we go outside and be additional hours for this pour? And he said, I don't have the ability to do that, go to the plane. Builder did not play the plane.
Yeah, there's, they would have to, the enforcement would have had to have been built into the requirement.
So is there, is there a, can we, can we find him? This is my question, it seems like something like this, right, here we go, for final, to finally, just to stand for, but I would assume anyone can put. Capex can to be agreed to say, you know, if there are, again, if you do, if you're trying to interrupt you, then these time. Not get forced involved, it's like you guys sign contract, you'll be all this money, is that?
Well, you don't do that, you shouldn't do that. Yeah, that's, I hadn't, I hadn't thought about structure now, but I don't know how to play that with structures. Maybe you're making course out of it. Building commissioners just.
They enforced a language right in the permit.
Yeah, especially for a huge project, I think it's not like a tiny building.
No, it's massive.
That's right, yeah.
Lots of subcontractors who are just doing what they're told.
Yeah, exactly, guys that are following.
They probably just told to show up at the G C and.
And that decision forward, you know, we still, I can't say it's, and. Right now, it's like, I'm gonna say. Let's see what happens.
Right, we're just, we're gonna be mad about it. For not having any power to make any changes.
I mean, obviously they made a calculated decision, we're just gonna do this and then what we screw it up.
Right, and then maybe.
Then we're talking, even, even risk penalty. Yeah, exactly.
So can I back up for a second, maybe somebody could explain to me if we. If the extreme here is that our disappointment with the performance of the building commissioner resolves in us not appointing building commissioners. What happens?
So I want to make sure that this meeting doesn't get into a discussion on personnel, performance, or be that should be subject.
I'm just asking.
I just want to make sure we don't.
Yes.
Because I was worried about what we're talking about, the executive session, all that. So if the building commissioner was not reappointed, I believe, talked about this a while ago, so I'll, I'll bring it firm, but. It's not that you're revoking his appointment, you are not appointing a new one for fiscal twenty six and he will stay sure. To acting or interim or role until you want the T L S be appointed. Here's that's the point we require to have a building commissioner. Our building commissioner also functions as design enforcement officer. You can delegate those powers to another individual, but that individual will still report to the building commissioner. So our building commissioner does both building inspections and the building commissioner is where it's the design. So you can split those out, so how are the positions configured, it's also a, a full, a full debate. Right now, we have an hourly amount for fifteen hours of waiting for building commissioner. Time, that's how it's structured and that's what we budget it for fiscal twenty six.
And does it have to stay appointed? Is that like one that can be converted to a different type?
So my own.
By law.
Yeah, so my statute must have.
Just that title, that job search.
And can that position be also, can it be another point taken from that role?
There are specific licenses you need to be a building commissioner, which generally you are qualified for more after having a career kind of in the trades. So there's not, that's why they're difficult to recruit for, because the folks who have that skill set are on. Have their own business doing it rather than being excited.
So it's, you're saying it's pretty complicated.
And that's why we have a fraction of one, another town has a fraction of two, right, I believe much of it shares, shares theirs as well. Because the, and April as well.
Our is supposed to be over. It's fifty nine hours, what do you think about?
Um, that, so I have a.
Where's the bad place of the problem?
So I have a June sixteenth inspectional services round table with everybody in that building. To talk about what the, what the organization, the day to day, what each individual is responsible for and doing. And then how the kind of cohesiveness that one in the inspectional services world, how that's actually going to function. And then so part of that is. We need a ten-hour week of zoning enforcement, assistant zoning enforcement officer, where it frees up the building commissioner from the smaller stuff and he can focus on bigger stuff. Is that?
Yeah.
Maybe come forward, I don't have great insight right now to, to how much time he's actually great, we don't have a clock in, clock out system. He's not on, you know, in town in office for those fifteen hours, it feels a lot of it is doing a lot of.
And there's probably also some prioritization, because I know like there's a billion signs or violated, you know, sign violated. We don't go around, you know, having someone pick those out. By, because we have, we probably do, but. So.
We still want to pay a building commissioner, this will be how we're fifteen hours.
Exactly. Interesting people there, that discussion.
Yes, I'm. I don't know, it's kind of the, the crux of this, right, isn't it? When you, at fifteen hours, you're done, you're focused differently, to, for the fifteen hours, are we? Because there's not, not kind of, what, what comprises those fifteen hours?
The, I guess. I think part of the issue we're in the process because we, the two old things, this, this situation started July first. Right, so you have this meeting to discuss it, but I find more problem is, you know. Somebody who's building something, who's told, don't do it. And then he did it and so the issue is, you know, what, what stops us? What, what's going to stop somebody from saying, does Paul want to do it?
Yeah, I think if, if somebody came in and said, you know what, we shut down, you know, that's it. You know, you're not doing anything else, that I do it, is, is that the rule of speech, can we do that as, you know, how would?
So I think realistically the key theory is that. We are trusting that it's a one-time instance. And that that's not true, like if this happens again, I think there's a very, very different reaction from the building commissioner, I would expect it to be. And if it did happen again, it's just been this firm, this development group, this whatever, didn't hold up to their word, you know. Anytime they apply for another special permit from the planning board, I would expect less than, not, not a very reset effect.
I, I kind of like my idea as well, it's, it makes sense to reach out to, kind of, see. See if it makes sense to improve more script of language and.
I think it's, I'm not sure how they, I'm not sure what their leading, their progress are, and they'll do that.
You can look at the building commissioners at a certain level, seeing experience. I would say enforcement, somebody that is supposed to go for something, maybe not be insane. Definitely, I don't realize. I think to. Friends are overflown around, sign, things like that. I think enforcement of same kind of rules, well broadly outside of the criminal side, police gets better. That's actually somebody who's sort of kind of, that you start to, you know, by the oversight, maybe there's enforcement can be not just building, the building mission. Enforcement side of that, other areas that block those.
Yeah, so first of all, ultimately still, folks can build a commissioner, but you don't, you don't need all this, as you need to have an understanding of the seven and five hours. And give a direction on how prioritize your time.
Does the planning board give that direction to the building commissioner? Or is that the select?
On private learning?
Yeah.
Now, it's a point being, it's a point.
It may get spiked then, but I'm just like traditionally, is the planning board providing enough of a guidance?
I don't think so.
They're just saying, I should read what we've written, and that's all you know.
I think perhaps with a full-time planner and with this inspection services approach, we can refine that.
Alright, so.
No action.
No action, does, does anybody have anything else they want to add?
So anyone, the, the. So anyone, the the experiments has come up, so the general bible, the community is looking into that.
Uh not just looking into it, they uh interviewed the chief, they've uh gotten uh noise ordinance information from other towns and they're trying to put together a draft of what that might look like so they can present it to the courts. Yeah, um it's complicated, right? If you're really trying to, you know, stop leaf blowers at seven o'clock in the morning, but that leaf blower is at twelve o'clock in the middle of the day when people should be cleaning leaves, right? So it's, you have to be really careful about how it's written um to ensure that it's not exploited just in the first.
Then it can have be something that would address this cancer, then they.
Well, the early morning, I think definitely, right? Like, I think that's an easy, easy one of what's happening while people are normally sleeping or or just waking up, they're not really shooting quiet time. I think that's a pretty normal standard in communities or elevation. So that one, yes, but like if I can hear your big trucks from my home and it's approaching dinner time, like those types of weird things, that's more about what's the um from what I'm told, it's more about what's the likes, the actual measurement, what's the decimal uh grading of the additional beyond uh the noise, you know, that difference there. They actually physically don't measure it, but the police would then buy these tools and they would measure it at the site. This is what I'm told, how they do that portion of the enforcement, but it's not obvious, right?
Usually some of that is taken care of by, you know, zoning enforcement. You know, other than business, yeah, because you could do certain types of business in certain areas, right? So it's like, well, they reason, right, reason on giving heavy trucks, because somebody is, you know, they're actually running a mannequin with like their house and not supposed to. Right, so it fixes all the enforcement issue.
But we just had that issue. We just, we did fix that with zoning enforcement, so.
So it is just, but again, it comes back to enforcement.
And fees.
Yes, and and that's another, it's a drug down, so you shut down to it's rectified, it's going to pay a fine, a hundred dollars, a hundred, a thousand dollars for being. Ever, you know.
Yeah. Alright. Um, that leads us to the administrative report.
Alright. Um, so uh this was in an email, but I wanted to say to you, we had a resignation from the parks commissioning. So Commissioner John Dudley has resigned from the parks commission. Uh again, for service, he's still surveyor for the, yeah, supervisor. Um so there's three options um to uh go forward, leave it vacant until the next town election, to fill the remainder of the um unexpired term, um to call a special election, which council will want to do. Um and then to uh make a joint appointment with the parks commission um to fill it until the next election. Um I clarified with council that it takes a majority vote. It would be a joint meeting in between due to um four and it would take a majority vote each four. So it can't just be five to two, if someone, the two parks commissioners don't want. It's a majority vote of each, it's still current. Because two.
Now, so it's two people or it's two people.
Exactly. Uh so we'll advertise if should this be the path forward. And it's also tough with the three person board. Uh the two remaining people can just get together and talk about what they want to do. They got a call meeting. So uh I'll be supporting them, figure out what they want to do. Their mission, come back to you all.
Sounds good. Should you, one of the, one of the members, Dan, who was president who was going to pass away, some of this.
Yeah.
Not slow enough.
Age is down. Um, like I said, reappointments, um so we're gonna, can we certainly have this yet? The one you reappoint list? So we'll certainly have tomorrow, so you have a webinar, you can take a look there. We'll have um separated motions for looking, if you want to invite any of the people who are on for reappointment um to consider their reappointment, um send us a mail, we'll bring to that with eighteen.
Something like, is there anybody in that list uh who is had, is like a new, like a challenged reappointment? Or like a new recommendation or is that can be called out?
Sure. Uh I will say, uh our full time planner is interested in getting a D A coordinator. And our current A D A coordinator is interested in offering any new ones.
Okay, well, that's.
Our A D U, our accessory dwelling unit bylaw that was passed at um special town meeting, uh we got our response back from the attorney general's office. Uh I spoke with council ahead of time and uh town council said, for a different community, they recently got a thirteen page decision back from the H B O on the legality of bylaw. Uh our response was seventeen pages. So it's really frustrating for a lot of us that the state says, here's the failure you have to do, we're pushing it down. Here's, you only have three things where you can do anything.
That's right.
And then they didn't give us a, uh, by law, we still do, we had to come up with it on our own and it did. Separated agents, so uh.
Did we go back to?
Yeah.
So council according to how.
By law, they they reach out, that's.
She's got her.
She's.
It's a big time. Was it humor, very cool, is that why?
Issues with parking, issues with how it works with other parts of our bylaws. Um, I got, I mean, it's legal writing and I got to page four and I was on council's. Um, so I'll get the summary. This is an issue, this was an issue man, this is an issue of the public. Um, so.
So, yeah, so, um, to all over the state here.
Yeah, because they want us to do that, they just give us the model and.
Right, and then you check the box of the, what are your options?
Like they, the host beer, they were like, sure, I'll.
Well, I think, but didn't they, but wasn't the whole idea of this, they wanted, they just wanted more housing, so they just folded it. You can just add, what was it, eleven hundred square feet or?
Nine hundred up to twelve hundred, that's that's enough.
Right, well, that's that's what we packed. But I think the state just said, well, twelve hundred on existing property. Just having.
Without the exception.
Well, and just having conformed to, just having conformed to my ability. Right?
Yep.
You you know, and what happened is we put limitations on that. And that's what they, this is what I mean, it's what they wanted to do, because they wanted to make it easier to make room for more people, because we don't have a housing. They'll put the limitations on that explicitly to. I know. Yeah, but I I think the problem is, there's one group that, to make the law, another group that put on the side of the elephant, you can somebody went through the effort like us.
Right.
And other people didn't, and.
Right.
Fifteen those on top, so.
Thank you.
For the, yes, sir.
Oh, that's that way again.
For you.
Yeah, I love it. I want to expand it.
Yes. August, August, our council will see. Um, so.
Good job.
Um, we we made the transfer, or it's formally transferred uh for an appraiser for the trash supply estate. Um so our appraiser got out there. At the building, toured everything, um there's a lot. calculation is difficult, there's a ton of good line comps, because there's a lot of work to be done to get up to a rentable state, which is what you then need. So I'm having a conversation with them on Friday, um to see our path back towards this. In terms of, well, that means with town versus price, the fact that it's in disrepair, it's all the market value. As a result, probably end up paying less than it, uh but it makes the uh inputs into the arithmetic of it. To verify, so I've never done this before, so I'm gonna talk about it. Um, I went to M M M A last week, I said, last time I was going to M A. Uh it was awesome, it was um it was a really great three days to spend with other folks, specifically in Massachusetts um about um stuff that you do day and down. Sometimes it feels like bang, I think so a lot of those are folks drink. I've noticed that there was an unusually high amount of sessions on manager mental health. We spent an entire day on mental health and avoiding burnout. So that was, that was helpful.
It's good, it's enjoyable.
Drawn, it's early entirety, so it's at nine to three.
Get burned out.
No, it was good. So I'm inherently like skeptical of. Smiling, said we're smarter, grass chest.
We're not, I don't like. I.
Yeah, exactly.
Out horse here.
I was. Awesome. Because the way I'm talking to other lawyers, um how do you give a ability?
Like lawyer bullying?
Just, yes. That's like colleagues and judges.
Yeah, must be hard.
But just, I just, I've seen it.
Yeah, so I got to, you know, talk with folks I'm in, talking about their issues with P fast in their wells getting water on fires and getting, you know, stormwater and wastewater and stuff like that. Spent a lot of time with a lot of senior managers from from other communities and um no one has like a I see it everything, but um this worked in my community, why don't you think about it this way, talk about my overall. Uh the situational manager told me just to buy the same big model cars that I needed, so yeah, so people like out of town all the time. So that was his approach.
I agree with you, say, we don't.
Say. She's got me up.
Uh, yeah.
Should buy a police car.
Um, on kind of the other side of the uh uh building department, so we have a number of fees, uh permit fees. Uh ours are seemingly unnecessarily complicated, um especially on the electrical side. Um, so we're, uh the building uh commissioner put together a proposal need to consolidate um the types of fees and to increase the structure to be more similar to surrounding communities and um a lot of them haven't been updated in at least a decade. Uh and then part and parcel of that is uh also increasing the per inspection fee for inspectors. Right now they get sixty dollars per inspection. And they take it very good times, but um al- along with this increase of fees, uh bring those one line. Uh the increase of fees can kind of happen by a, one of this board, whenever we increase the inspectors, you know, focus the budget that adds inspector um budget to it, so that would, that would do that as part of next year's budget.
Not much. Inspector suggesting the increasing of a inspector.
And so the building inspector, yes, maybe the building inspector is the building commissioner, he's fifteen hours to be getting salary to that. The wiring, the gas, the plumbing, those inspectors get paid on per inspection basis. The proposal also includes uh compensation for like permanent view, staff time, backend, I hope that'll end up bringing that forward. I think if we just increase the overall per inspection fee, that would take care of the it's not just the.
Look at fees, you know.
Like, I was gonna look that up, that we were talking about, the fees that are embedded in the bylaws. And then they didn't correspond any of these adjustments.
It's bill, it's talking about all the pieces, yeah, see, conservation, there's a global, we did this.
It should be.
Yeah, it's it's a global.
Yeah, it's five dollars to this permit, goes a hundred dollars for a very similar permit on a different side of the house, states.
Yeah, and then.
That's what being part of. Certain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and after we all get them, we'll have to, they have the two bit.
I don't have some people.
System that's meant that.
You know, I'm thinking, you know, like, I'm gonna, you 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 tag it in the part of financial.
Yeah, I just don't have one hundred and thirty five hundred and twenty nine cents.
Yeah, well, we can say hand rounds down to the nearest five percent.
Yeah, we can do it. So that's actually part of that, so I'm, I was, what I thought, close on financial policies to be able to share. And then I went to a D O S webinar on policies and I was like, wow. So um I pulled down some stuff from the Financial Management Resource Bureau, which is called C A B, the Technical Systems Bureau. It's your D O S that did the twenty twenty three um financial management review uh for the town. So pulling down a lot of their, so I was pulling from others they have. Um, I.
Forgot, the guy who's gonna be defining.
Uh, this was E O Calis from from, and then Sean Ryan, the senior district commissioner. For local services was also part of this presentation. I work with him. Um, so writing down the document, I think I get a better document after what we learned earlier, so that will be, we'll have it on eighteen. Uh personnel policies, um H R, Katie, our intern, which might as well, our, working on a little bit too, I don't quite have a game. So we have an intern, so Sean Bailey.
Awesome.
Nick Moncai, um after AP courses are over and seniors kind of don't go to school anymore, which I didn't realize was a thing. Um, the juniors, um there's a cohort of about sixty juniors in this program for three weeks, go out and do internships um throughout the community. Um, so we had Sean last week, this weekend, next week. Um, he's worked on uh some some bylaw projects, including gender neutral projects, uh bylaws. Spent uh time of being in both meetings, local person and online, go to the board commission, work for treasury. H R projects, Friday, we worked on mechanics, with the health admin, um doing some of their vision station too. Uh so it's, um, some of it is, you know, kind of annoying. It it's not business work, but it's a little, some of it's a little tedious, but none of it is paperwork stuff, right? This is stuff that we have to get done and cannot. So he um he lives in Upton, um and I'm really talking.
Done, interested in municipal over.
He said he took AP golf and realized he didn't know how of this level of garbage, like AP golf, so he. Jason has an interest.
I have as well, and I've been hanging out around here, so, but the entire city.
And I believe that we want to, believe we want the police department as well. Uh our agenda tool through the website, our boards and commissioners tool, uh will launch on July, for the July sixteenth meeting. Um, so Katie's been really excited about the man's piece of this. Uh, uh, then we do it after we launch the new website, which is the seventh, eighth. Uh, but it's providing us some organizational tools now and then once we get our final training, our final documents, and to our other, we'll provide them all with, you know, step by step, here's how you use the tool.
Did your site training go good?
Yes.
Thanks.
Uh.
It went okay, like the the web.
The website.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, so Dan Byer right now does most of the backlog stuff for most people on the website. Uh and it's really blunt and difficult. Uh he was super pleased with the user, the user experience of the back end stuff. Uh, but I, I hope.
It's easier updates.
Yeah. So we're doing, next week we have user group one, user group two, so different folks need different types of modules or, and you don't want to get sad people to go. Get around through the stuff. It's boot camp, so it's tough, right? So when you're on it, we're like, alright, no one, you do this thing, alright, Katie, you're up, can you do that thing too? Share your screen, I'm sharing my screen, so hopefully it drilled into. Um, the fire department will be here on July second to give a presentation on the state of the fire department. Uh, I have great courage. Uh so I think I'm gonna work uh together, I said that, but it will be on staffing. Want to say issue, state of staffing, and then staffing goals going forward, and then also about physical plants and what in terms of of assets and just, um, we we've talked about it at this for a couple of times, but what's, what's the plan for the fire department in the next decade? How do we get there? Uh so all of that looking for one range franchise plan as well, so um tacking on, can we add additional positions in whatever capacity through the next three, five, seven years? One of the policies, one range franchise plan. Somehow my kind of end of fiscal year thoughts to the department heads, uh gathered what they think are K P I's uh in their own departments that they are currently could measure. We asked them on July one to measure something, what can you measure right now? Uh and then that, so that starts the baseline discussion, meant to say, what should you be measuring, what can you measure instead? I kind of, I've worked together on more robust approach than what department I think it is. So again, rolling out with some uh folks who think and and uh you're champions on that. Um and then they also uh provided their goals for fiscal twenty six, so I have a list and I'll share this for, uh it's like a pilot to a reasonable um format, uh what departments want for their goals uh for the upcoming fiscal year, and I think that can not wholly, but inform what the select work wants to talk about in the goal discussion, which I think we should schedule for July at some point. Um, so with folks, we've got five Wednesdays in July. So folks want to check their calendar, schedule. So folks, I'll check their calendar, schedule.
I would think so, yeah. Um, yeah, a goal, a goal session is is a great idea for July, I'm just, um. What's the best way for you to receive dates now that you've done this a few times? Should we send out a survey of dates, or you want me to just send you?
If you just send me dates that you're, how are you want that, these dates do, every date, but this works or only days work? There's my five.
I like restrict it to Mondays and Wednesdays or something, uh, what was the day that, uh, is it Monday that you can? Alright, so, let's, let's try to shoot for some Monday options for the. For the, um, goal session, and that could be the seven, fourteen, twenty first, twenty eighth, or. Like six weeks, man.
So, um. Tell me what works, well, guess what? Yeah, blue. Um. So a few things out of the treasurer's office, um. The coming assistant treasurer collector, um, after, um. A lot of coaching, um. Needing some HR supervisors, what's not up to the role, um, so we're ultimately. Let that person go, um. No hard feelings, the person was. A worker, great customer service, was very good in the town clerk's office, and any of the treasure collectors office in that part of the job, but, um. Is not hitting our milestones for the assistant treasurer collector portion of the job, so we got a meeting with Ellen, the town clerk, treasurer collector about. That's debris and combine combining these two, was that part of the issue, or the disparate still sets, how do we want to move going forward? Uh. Uh, actually, it was based on the condition we've, um, through this week, so the health insurance continues to come July, or two June, sorry, rather than. Expiring just a couple of days after, um, in in bed, which, um. Same phrase all the time, I want to make this place the kind of place I want to work, and that's the, that's the kind of stuff that's really our power to do, make someone's bad situation, someone's life not worse, so. Yes, health insurance for June, um, and I've had. Recommendation based upon the things that I love, it's good, I think. Better news out of the treasurer's office, we, uh, past the week, we've had two checks coming for back taxes, back load taxes prior fiscal years. On first money, one thousand with dollars, and for fifty thousand five hundred.
Oh.
So, seventy-two grand to the good.
That would be, I'm questioning for.
Um, so the.
Was that for any effort of us, sort of that?
Large efforts.
Okay.
So this was before, we, these have not yet got the tax title, so if you follow changes in municipal laws since. Last July first, there are huge, huge changes in tax title that make it, that actually lowers the interest rate of what. Four-year tax title, actually auctioning off forebodes, you know, auctioning off non-property is huge, huge, yes, true. So we'd like to, uh, do that, we'd like to save the salad, I have some.
Also, the. Right.
Um, so we typically see a ninety-nine point eight, ninety-nine point nine percent collection rate on property taxes. Um, and then, uh, that's, that's anticipated in our budget, and what we. Still budget for full amount, but we don't budget anything for prior year elections, so when prior year back tax elections like these outpace our non-current year collections. Ends up being additional money. And that's all I got.
Great, so, uh, moving on to future agenda items, uh, there's, uh, four items currently on here. Um, creating the, uh, portable housing committee. Doing a highway road maintenance plan follow-up, which, uh, John will be, uh, working with the TA on that. Uh, we just heard about Chief Bangwa coming in to do a presentation at the July second meeting. And then, um, the land inventory, which, um. Mr. Goddard had been asking about the, uh, should they hopefully get someplace, we've chatted with Dylan about, um. What we need to do to actually have an inventory that's readable and profitable and organized, it's all a category's land, including. So. Um, and then something that just came up just a little bit ago, uh. Would be talking about the fee structure in the bylaw. Um. Is that a clue that disposal fee? Is that a different? Bylaw, we had just talked about that recently, about fifty dollar.
That's a different bylaw, so, despite.
There's another future meeting event where we need to talk about another bylaw that refers to the value of which we can dispose of items.
Which is last updated in nineteen.
So it's, it's pretty out of date, it makes it very hard for people to do their job, and it's, um, you get a lot of fronts sitting around, it's hard even. So, uh, that's another future agenda, does anybody have any other things they'd like to talk about?
Yeah, I have a question about, you know, the community relations, does that include?
Yeah. I just saw the one, so one person, um, is interested in the committee the other day, who. God, I need to make sure.
Yeah, I I've been asked by, you know, so many people, uh, you still, you still gonna do this?
Yeah, so. Yes.
And I would, and I would just ask a lot of the. Those, I said before, this certain will line. Where when you're up.
Yeah, yeah, I was.
Angela's. There's this very. This, this is important.
Yes, burial ground space and, um, and moving the memorial from. Uh, April.
Anyway, can I ask you a couple of things? Couple of these things I just heard really pulled up on your, our adwords and think about. Agcon and people wanting to join, we shouldn't pull up people wanting to join, can you, um, for this, but we just talked about F part one six. We invited patients, Agcon, ECs, foundation, about other things like that, just media creation, media assessment, just. That's a great, make that broad, maybe this agenda idea to say. What does it need hope to accomplish? I keep hearing tactical, non-off things that I mean, do you actually like this?
In setting up meetings, or like, what is the board looking?
What's, what are you working on in the council, if you have a committee revitalization, assessment, creation? Fairground space. And that is a specific land use, we've talked about protecting the product session around. For our land, for our needs, users, most of our inventory, having started to take action against that, so, so let me try and measure. Keeping these.
Reorganization of that happens.
That is, but but I think from s- from our standpoint, we need to set up a strategic, set up. Strategy, uh, of which many of these tactical needs should be rolling.
It's a great thesis to.
It's a great point, you know, it's it's kind of, you can't steer a parked car, so just keep the car moving. But if you keep the car.
We don't want it to crash us.
But the idea is to keep the car moving.
Yeah.
Because if it's not moving, then you can't get it in the right direction, so don't wait to appoint people to get community robots. Just appoint people that are committing to stay or not.
So this is good seeding for our goals meeting in in July, and, um, and that we can maybe add that goals meeting gets specific. A public meeting, items to talk and do.
And you know, when you reach our goal meeting, it's really just an extension of all the time. Yeah, sorry, and, no. Should be a. Just getting practice. Try to move it.
Uh, okay, uh, and is there any, anything else for the next meetings?
Why, I want to say I will be, um, removed July second, I'm sorry not to be very explicit of the fire department presentation, but I'll be in health.
Awesome. Does it mean I'll be moved to sixteen, I mean, you'd love to. Uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's funny, oh, it's good, it's June, alright, so our next meetings, I thought it was July. The next, the next meetings, uh, coming up are June eighteenth, July second, and July sixteenth. Um. So great, get those on your calendars. And, uh, that's it, I think, for the night, so I would.
Motion to adjourn.
Be my favor. Uh, all those in favor? Uh, hi, all those against? Alright, well then I close, uh, tonight's meeting at eight thirty PM, thank you for joining us, everybody, have a great night.